Evening everyone, I want to welcome you to our Missouri City Council meeting dated September twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Council members, you all received your packets on the weekend. We had time to look for whatever, recover any questions from the city administrator. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the agenda. So moved, thank you, council member Huntington. Council member Nelson seconded. Any other discussions? Comments? Concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Moving on to a public hearing, twenty twenty-five street utility improvement project assessment. Before we open that public hearing, we need an introduction for Mr. Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City engineer Bing Fang is here tonight. And I won't go ahead and steal all of this thunder, but there'll be a brief presentation here to talk about where we are in the process of the North Fourth Street. Street utility improvement project along the street. I walk through that and then appropriate following presentation. And public comments during the public hearing, excuse me, that following the presentation that city council would consider opening a public hearing. Or take from here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rob. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. So tonight, we are here to conduct our second public hearing as part of the chapter four twenty-nine project. Process related to the North Fourth Street twenty twenty-five street utility improvements project. The first hearing is an improvement hearing. We conduct that near the beginning stages of our project after the feasibility report to kind of talk about project's goal area. Tonight, the second hearing is all about the assessment process. And so that that is what we're here to talk about. I'm gonna do a short kind of presentation in regards to the assessment process, just for the benefit of council and those our attendants tonight, but behalf of the public. I'll address any concerns of the council and then we would formally open a hearing. Receive comment during that hearing period, close the hearing, and then we can engage in other discussion. There'll be no action tonight as part of this hearing. The purpose is strictly to conduct the hearing. And then we've adopted a process where we then consider adoption of the assessment at the next council meeting. That allows time for consideration of any comments, just kind of some respectfulness to the process. And then the final recording of that assessment, once adopted there, next council meeting or the consideration thereof, then there is a recording. The company recorder's office, that's that November thirtieth date. That's the required date for that recording. So if you don't mind, Joe. So this map should be pretty familiar. This is a map we've used all throughout the project process. So a special, a special assessment is, is. A special debt assessment is the benefiting adjacent property. So all of the North Fourth Street corridor from Bridge Street to Dakota Street. And then Cat Cart from North Commerce to Forest Street. So this map is just a graphic, a depiction of all those benefiting properties they have read. We have a hundred and four properties that are being assessed as part of this project. And the consideration of the benefit then is the based on project improvement. So in this particular case, we have a full reconstruction. All the two minutes replacement underground utilities, passion improvements, those improvements that we're talking about for the last year and a half, you know. And are currently in process of being completed. And then there's a consideration of the type of property. So we have a pretty diverse corridor here as we recognize throughout this project process. The most high in number is the single family residential. I have a situation of a two family residential, one PID. Business school, public institutional with the school, the church, and then we have some different use within the church. Maybe referencing a park and not our actual church structure itself. Don't mind me. So then the way that the city, city, we saw our special assessment policy speaks specifically to the conducting of a benefit appraisal to tie that adjacent benefiting. Component of a project to the the special benefit, the special assessment in this case. And so we use benefit appraisal, third party party. Patching Messner has conducted all of the benefit appraisals since twenty seventeen. So this will be our fourth project process now utilizing this special benefit appraisal process. They've conducted all four of those. And it's been a consistent evaluation or a consistent benefit for a single family residential on all four of those appraisals. So. In the case of the the left-hand side of the screen, you can see at the very top is the single family residential. The way that a benefit appraisals come back, the report itself identifies a low range and a high range of that benefit. And it's been past practice and kind of precedent that the city council or staff recommend the low estimate for that benefit. And so the. Very top hand is a single family residential at that seventy-five hundred. And that's been that consistent value here since that twenty twenty, twenty seventeen project. Then when it comes to the non-residential properties within that benefit appraisal, we designate those properties by PID. There's a property type that previous slide speaks to some of those uses. And then there's an estimate of benefits specific to each of those non-commercial too. So every property, every PID that's non. Residential here has a listed benefit of low and a high. And then in this particular case, the assessment is being considered over a twenty-year period. And the important thing to note is that the assessment process is finalized here in twenty twenty-five, but then recorded at the end of this year, that November thirtieth date. Then that first year of that payment period, that that first year of the twenty-year period, that is the twenty twenty-six. So the first payments payable. As part of that taxing process in twenty twenty-six. So special benefit, special assessment process is the the final step in the chapter four twenty-nine. We have a very kind of rigorous process of steps and required. You know, meetings and hearings to legally enact the chapter four twenty-nine process. The assessment hearing is the final hearing. It's an opportunity for the public that are being being specially assessed to to speak to the council. Feedbacks that they may have in regards to assessment process. Feedback can be received in oral tonight as part of that public hearing or in writing. Proceeding that public hearing. And then council is the ultimate kind of authority. We have a guidance of process and how we recommend a special assessment to those benefiting properties. But council in the end has the ultimate say in part of that process where we conduct the hearing tonight and then adopt the next meeting to allow for council to have that say. Final assessment total of those hundred and four properties is that eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. The total project costs, as we've been discussing here throughout this process, is estimated right at eight million. Being that we're still in construction there and we're carrying some contingency. And then a pretty diverse funding source that is supporting this project, special assessments is certainly a component that the city utilizes to fund the street utility project. Tying some of that direct benefit then to that financial obligation bill for the project. We have the L R P grant that we're aware of. We have the turnback funds recognized in this quarter was originally county is now city. Utility enterprise funds, general funds, and then the PFA through the clean water and the and the drinking water for the sewer and water components. So that's where the the debt's going to be borrowed is through that PFA program. So as part of this slide, I thought it would be beneficial here to just to kind of portray an example payment schedule. So this is assuming a single family residential at that assessed. A value of that seventy-five hundred that I referenced previously. Within our special assessment policy, we speak to a final interest rate of three percent, a minimum of three percent or one percent above an interest rate that's part of the bond. In this particular case, a bonding I referenced is going to be considered through the PFA program. One of the values of that program is a lower interest rate on that bond than what you would otherwise get through the market. And so that's the attractiveness of the PFA. We're still finalizing that final bond interest rate. There's some funding components to that that are also out of our control. We're. Planning and hoping for an adoption of final interest rate prior to that recording period. And right now we have some estimation, we feel is a is a sound estimation that this time that that interest rate would be. Two six six, two point six six for the PFA plus the one percent. So that's estimated here on the screen at three point six six. That would be the interest rate that's adopted with the assessment. The important thing to know here is on the collection side, that kind of table breakout, we've got that collection year over a twenty-year period. First payment due in twenty twenty-six, as I spoke to earlier. And then it's a, it's an equal payment installment over the twenty years. So you'll see the principal and the interest, those aren't balanced, but then the total due there, the. Third, fourth column on the right there, that five thirty-five, that's the estimated monthly payment. And then you can work your way down. One of the parts of the assessment process is you can, you can pay this off. It would call it the don't, the do nothing or just, you know, essentially let the process ride. That would be the full twenty-year payment. It's listed on your county tax statement. This would be the the amount that you would pay through the assessment process. You have opportunities to prepay pre-interest. You have opportunity to pay remaining amounts to kind of any time of this collection year period. So you have a lot of flexibility in how you. How you want to choose to to pay out that assessment period overall or that assessment through that overall twenty-year period. Don't mind, Joe. So in summary, in the city of Missouri, our assessment role is based directly on a special benefit appraisal which we've, which we've had completed. That has been accessible on the project website, is accessible through the council packet here. We've had a draft through. For more than a year and we've had a final for at least the better half of this year. As part of this hearing process is a pretty structured noticing requirements. So we're obligated to notice of this hearing tonight in the newspaper. Two weeks prior to the hearing that was conducted on September fifth, we're also obligated to mail to the individual properties. A mailing that speaks to the assessment process, notices of this hearing tonight, time and place, as well as list the amount that is recommended to be assessed. And so those mailings. Were conducted and placed in the U.S. mail on September fourth. So happy to answer any questions that council or make this Mary have. Once we're kind of done with that, then there would be a formal ask to open the public hearing for tonight. In regards to the assessment for the North Fourth Street, Cat Cart project.
Thank you, Mr. Bing Fang. Anybody have any questions, comments from Mr. Bing Fang or Mr. Rob? Are we on schedule with everything there?
We are, yeah. We we are. Ultimately, milestones, schedules have been kind of amended here. Working with, you know, project partners on the corridor to have successfulness and say school startups and. Different obligations that way. But overall completion date that that really matters is is the end of season, the completeness of the road so that we can. We can endure a winter weather environment and we have, we have confidence that we will hit that milestone. That's a mid-November milestone. And so, you know, and all the all honestly, that's the one we're tracking hard and making good decisions about. But we've had to make some intermediate milestone kind of amendments and accommodations and we're working through those on a daily basis. So it's the best answer I can give. It's construction. Obviously, the weather this year has been somewhat challenging. It's a large project. We understood that. So I think we're working through it and we expect a successful completion similar to the other ones we've delivered. So.
Thank you. Considering it's a very busy quarter and the weather's been challenging, I think everything's gone pretty smooth. I appreciate that much. Now, anybody else? Mr. Rob, we have anything before you open? Public hearing, I mean, with that said, I would, if there's no questions, comment, I would consider a motion to a public hearing for the Fourth Street. So moved, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all in favor? Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Councilmember Nelson, any names on that list?
There is. There's two. I don't know all this.
Well, this is public comments or public comments?
So there is nothing on the other list.
Nothing on the other list?
Empty.
Thank you. Appreciate you helping out. All right. With that said, with no other comments or anything, I didn't obtain a motion to close the public hearing. So move.
Just second.
Oh, hello, all right, go ahead.
I I don't have the proper proceedings. May I just say a quick comment of just the the letters sent out on September fourth?
Regarding the Fourth Street project?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Step up to the mic if you would, introduce yourself and if you'd share your address with us.
Sure. My name is Jacob. I noticed on this piece of paper, it didn't mention anything about.
Jacob, your address and your full name. Thank you.
Okay, Jacob Wagner, address five oh five, Quarter, Fourth Street.
Thank you.
In the letter sent out September fourth for the notice of hearing of proposed assessment. This paragraph, second page, it does mention that no appeal to district court may be taken as to the amount of the assessment unless a written objection. Something property owners filed with the city clerk prior to assessment hearing or presented to the presiding officer at the hearing, which we read, so it becomes public record. So within that sentence, I guess it didn't hear anywhere where I had to read it and say, I just have to give it to the presiding officer. And that's all I'm trying to do. So I just wanted to make sure that I did that for the proper means and method.
Mr. Rob, you understand that question of that letter? I don't know if I've seen it.
I do have the letter.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Thank you.
First page, and then it's the top paragraph, second page, where it mentions.
If I understand you, are you objecting to something?
Yes, I have a written objection here for the assessment. Or did you hand that to someone or? You want me to read it?
Yeah.
Okay. I also wanted to submit it and write it to the officer for the note if that's still acceptable. For sure, I'll read this. To make concern, this is being written as a written objection to the amount of the assessment for the twenty twenty-five street and utility. North Fourth Street and Cat Cart Street improvements project. I am objecting to the specific assessment for the lot, piece or parcel of land that I have a property in. This is due to the property devaluation due to construction damage occurring in this utility improvement project. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I want to submit that.
It was the officer.
Well, I am. Thank you.
Again, I'm just reading the piece.
No, I appreciate that. We'll take this into consideration. We'll get this to the.
Is it, could I have that copy back once you guys are done with that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
If I want to submit one. Also, I have to submit it.
Well, according to that letter, when was the date on that letter?
Now's the opportunity to submit, share any.
Okay.
The only opportunity is right now. I can't do it later or email it or read it.
You want to step up and tell those voices, wait in the.
No, I'd rather do one like an official. In the wording of it, doesn't she could say she has till the thirteenth of October, doesn't say till she has.
It says.
I thought it actually said that it needed to be here to second page. You can submit questions or comments. It says by September seventeenth. I don't know if that includes this. That was the last paragraph on that.
Mr. Mr. Bing Fang, you want to step up and. Explain this process? Do you understand the process?
Based on my experience conducting this previous, the intent of the public hearing tonight is to allow for objections to the assessment. But the timing is critical. So the the public hearing is currently underway. We are conducting the public hearing. It hasn't been closed yet. Objections need to, in my experience, be received either orally or written prior to the closing of the public hearing. That is an important step, as I understand it, you know, into an objection or appeal of a special assessment.
Thank you. So it sounds like you're not too late, but this is your opportunity. So if you don't have any written, you just want to submit it.
Well, I don't know if this is. You're not reading it.
I'm sorry, you didn't introduce your name.
Uh, Sony Vonse, four sixteen, North Street. I am a single mother and I have two special needs kids. I don't think I can afford this. It's a lot of money and I'm already struggling. So I just don't think I'd be able to do this. There's some sort of way I can get some. We can see on that or a five or something to help me out today. I just, I I won't be able to do that. I'll be struggling.
Okay. Let me start your first name again.
So much.
Lansing.
Vonse.
Okay. Thank you for your your comments and you did submit the oral objection. So it's on the record. We appreciate it. Anybody else? Ms. Rosie Gagin.
Okay, Rosie Gagin, one seventy-two North Morningside. My objection is I was hit with an assessment when they did Morningside and Park Lane. And then at that time, I was charged for half the length of my lot, which worked out to sixty-four hundred dollars at the time. I was told by the city administrator and at that time that when they did the Fourth Street side, I would also be assessed in half. So now I'm being assessed at a full price. I asked Mr. Bing Fang to figure out what the half would be way before this even started. And I didn't get any information from Cory. That's my concern.
Well, I appreciate that. And it's noted that you are concerned and you were very specific about what you're concerned about. Morningside, when we came on Morningside.
That was two thousand five and two thousand six. And that went on my property taxes. And it was my half of that was sixty-four hundred dollars.
And your address is?
One seven two North Morningside, but I'm on the corner of North Fourth Street and Morningside. I'm already propping you. Yes.
Well, you can't get any luckier than that, Rob.
I know. I love them when they come over. So yes.
Well, Rosie, thank you.
Thank you.
If I call you Rosie, do you?
Absolutely. Please do. Absolutely.
It's noted, which you're going to see tonight.
Thanks for your time.
Nothing will happen tonight, but we appreciate you addressing us. Thank you.
And I appreciate that my driveway's bad.
Good. Anybody else regarding the Fourth Street project? If not?
Because I have a lot of beer money.
What is the the project? If that's what you like to spend it on. Yes, it is a lot of beer money. Well, then, thank you. A lot of other things too. Now, we, I understand the the sacrifices people make here. It's, I don't think it might be. But these are some improvements that are done to our community that do improve the value of your home too. So with that said, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Just one quick question. What is my name to?
Was it January twenty-seven?
Yeah, I was supposed to be down until the project was done. Project will be done on January twenty-sixth, correct? But you're charging me for a project that's not complete yet.
Mr. Maslow, just step up here and I can do that. We need your name and your address, please. I don't mean to be difficult. We've, we've got a.
Not a problem. My name is Davis Holy, five forty-three North Fourth Street. Yeah, my question is, why are we being, why do I have to make my payment on January twenty-sixth when the project is not done yet?
Well, I, I just asked Mr. Bing Fang, where's Mr. Bing Fang? Scamming? If we're scheduled to be done by November?
Not not final complete. I don't come final completion until, what, November twenty-sixth? But you're going to be in charge of making payments on January twenty-sixth?
Well, it's a, half the work is done, so you'll start having.
Well, pay half the price.
But the break site is this, Mr. Maslow, it should be done painted here. Well. What if you wait another year?
Just the top quarter of target, right? Second quarter, yes. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
My understanding was at the very beginning, the majority, Mr. Bing Fang, of the work, the majority of the work is going to be done in November.
And Mr. Mayor, if you have to give a chime in on the specific question. So there's something across the several lines consistent with all the other projects. So. We've made the decision to require substantial completion, same calendar year that the work starts. In this particular case, that's that bottom lip of asphalt pavement. We've elected to do the final lift after one year of free stop, just to ensure that all the other work is able to observe. We can. We can address any, any, any winter-related concerns prior to putting that topless asphalt pavement on. The assessment process that we followed is we do a, we do a fall of the year of construction assessment process. So we adopt the assessments here this fall. Substantial completion is understood to be this fall. The way that the assessment process works is once they're recorded, the first payment is due the year following recording. In this particular case, it's going to be twenty twenty-six. It's a, it's a, it's a certain period over a fifteen or twenty-year period in this particular case. And so. The way that, the way that we follow the process here now is the first payment is going to be due in twenty twenty-six. There is within chapter four twenty-nine, a lot of leniency about when you actually in that final adopt your assessments. And so this is the way that has been done historically, the sewer. And there, as I understand it, there's no legal right or wrong in this. This is just the way that we have done it. And the way we're proposing to do it here now consistent with those previous projects. So. That's the, that's the best answer I can provide in regards to the timing of tonight. The completion of a project and their, and the, and the first payment of the assessment. And to be a little bit clear, January twenty twenty-six, I'm not quite sure, you know, where that got immediately referenced, but the actual. The actual final payment is due through that county tax process. So when you get your tax statement, there is a special assessment. Line, a role specific to that. And that's when your process will be actually, that payment will be due, if that makes sense. So. That's it.
May fifteenth. May fifteenth, October fifteenth.
I just got to work a lot of overtime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maslow. Are the payments, are they monthly or are they yearly?
Mr. Well, if you get a question, we got stuff like.
That's a question. And have. I guess it's, I guess I didn't pay attention. Are the?
Oh, you don't name an address. We need all that.
So we'll record five thirteen North Fourth Street, Wayne Weldon. The payments, are they monthly or are they yearly when you pay your taxes?
If you would like to make the payments on it, it's, it's on your assessment and it's, if, and if you're escrowed, if you're escrowed, it would be monthly.
Oh, okay.
So when your taxes are paid through your escrow, you're paying into a monthly. But I mean, you could, if you're paying physically, want to pay it and just be.
Yeah, annoying when they do that second street. So.
You can, you can write a check down for it and be done with it. But if, like I said, if you have an escrow, they usually take that out of your escrow account.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
With that said, anybody else? Anybody, anybody? If not, I'll entertain motion to close public comment on the Fourth Street project. So moved. Thank you, council member Huntington. So remember, Williams, thank you, seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you.
All right. So I conduct the action here tonight then. So we've received some comments and those will be done for the council's consideration here, leading up to then the. Final roll for adoption at the next meeting on October thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Bing Fang. Appreciate you being here for the clarity of everything and also for the information. So, so. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda considered routine have been made available to city council these two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be enacted in a motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member or citizens' sole request, which have been, the item will be removed from the. Agenda and considered in normal sequence. Mr. Rob, do you want to go over these things with us?
Everyone, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, the consent agenda is approval of city council minutes from the September eighth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Next is approval of dispersments through today, included in those dispersments of three items over twenty-five thousand dollars. The first is the Golden Bank. For their engineering work on the twenty twenty-five street utility improvements project, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. Second, DeCaster John Incorporated for the work on the North Fourth Street Electric Distribution Project, application number three, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. Then finally to Waste Management, Recuse and Recycling Services for August twenty twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. And then finally, item C is approval of the payment application number three, DeCaster John Incorporated for North Fourth Street Electric Distribution Improvements Project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for city members regarding the consent agenda? If not. I consider a motion to abstain, consent agenda. So moved. Councilmember Sullivan, second, councilmember Schrader, any discussion? Comments? Concerns? None? All those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Public comment, public comment, why the not getting public address to city council on, I think that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. For someone who should make. Comment must sign up on a sheet in advance and provide for us their name and address. Public comment tonight. Public comment tonight, we have Mr. Michael Tui from Four-Eighth South Second Seventh Street. Am I having that correct?
You have it correct.
Now that I've got the news to you, you can go right in.
All right. Thank you. I'm here just, uh, by the time I'm done, I'm gonna have a request. Uh, I went to the budget meeting and I was really surprised to see that fifty, the fifty thousand dollar cash was pulled out of that grant application. I asked, I mean, it was, uh, you know, it was earmarked for it in the CIP and it was removed. I had to ask myself, I mean, that was a coveted grant, both application and receipt. And here, taking fifty thousand dollars out of it could impact the success of getting the grant. I asked myself, why? Well, and I'm, if you call me a cynic, but it's easy to replace the way the system is set up now. How could you get that fifty grand back in there without impacting the five percent? Couple of ways that I can think of. Take fifty grand out of the CIP. Boom, it's there. Another way to do it would be to transfer from one fund to another. Now, as an example, the electric fund, I'm going by the two thousand twenty-four city audit. The, uh, the, the balance of that fund is six million dollars. And in two thousand twenty-four, they had an operating income of over two million dollars. Taking fifty thousand dollars out of that to pay for that grant is, you know, it's illegal. Could do it, but the council never sees any of that. I was there for two years. Now, once can I recall being presented with, I'm gonna take money from point A and put it into point B. I was never exposed to it. So what I am proposing and what my request is, that one of you come up with a resolution that says you transfer from fund A to fund B. You move money. You have to put it in front of the council. You have to answer the questions, where is it coming from? Where is it going to? And why? And get the approval of the council. Now, again, in my two years, I don't think this happens very often. So it shouldn't be a burden on the council to do that. It would be very similar to what was just done with the expense report. That over twenty-five grand, there it is. Boom, you're done. Out. With this, it really opens the transparency of where that money's moving around behind the scenes that the council never sees. I looked, I couldn't find the state law, I read the city charter. There's no requirement to put it in front of the council. So when you see in that line item, transfer in, transfer out, big box, you don't know where it's coming from. You know, might know where it's going, but you don't know where it's coming from. I think the council needs to know that. I think they should be put in front of them. Here's what we're doing. Everybody said, go and do it. You need a resolution to do that because there is no mechanism that I could find for that to happen now. And that's what I'm asking for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tui. Uh, we were at both the same meeting. Um, I don't think we put the white flag up. So that's, that's not, no, no, you had your public comment. I'm just, I'm just speaking to it now. Nobody's put a white flag up. We could still change it. And we explored some different options. You, you brought up a different alley. I mean, we, we explored the CIP, we've explored the street department, and there's other revenues there out there that we could move around. Absolutely. So it's not like a bolt of lightning came down and. You've had your opportunity. We, we understand where you're coming from. And we have to put the white flag up on that project.
I use the example, you're, you're done. Yeah. And you're blocked.
Are you leaving, Mr. Tui?
Yes.
Goodbye. Uh, lastly, we have, um, Mr. Owen Geese. Is it Geeson? I saw him. I saw him. At one nine.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm longer. I said from, I'm, I'm, before I begin, can I pass these out to all? Thank you.
Thank you. And Owen, what brings you on Boy Scouts?
I like Scout, Mr. Mayor, and I come before the City Council meeting today to, uh, talk about, uh, a, um, how I plan to get to Eagle. Uh, I've been in Boy Scouts since around sixth grade and, um, a couple of months ago, I started working with Joel Schmidt at the, at the City Park Department about, um, a proposed Eagle Scout project, which would be renovating the disulf course at, uh, Mayo Park downtown. And I have, um, I, I fulfilled all the paperwork I need to from like a Boy Scout standpoint. I got Joel's signature and sent that in. From conversations with Joel, I don't believe I need council approval since I'm working on it. I, I just needed to work through Joel, and that's what I've been doing. Um, what I'm here to, tonight, to ask and talk about is, uh, one, just kind of getting, not necessarily your approval, but just your, um, your okay, like your verbal okay, like yes, it's something that. Yeah, endorsement thing. And, um, also just asking if they, uh, if there's anything that the council could do or suggest, um, to help me out on this. Um, the plan, uh, as, as it said in this little handout, is I want to install two new baskets because one of them is currently missing, or will go, two of them are currently missing. Uh, I'd like to, and I'd also like to put signage up on each basket with an arrow to the next basket, the whole number. And, um, a place to tee off of each basket and a sign through, uh, sign through our code and lead you a map of the course at the, uh, start of, of the course. You can see, uh, where I put that in the, in the second picture on that little handout. And, um, I think it's, uh, I think it's a very, um, it's a very awesome area. And, uh, the course there, it's, it's, right now, it's pretty good. But I mean, like I've been saying with the missing, uh, missing holes and no clear signage, you could be a lot better. And that's a really good area and I think I could, uh, put it to good use. And, uh, is there any, any, any questions from you guys on, uh, is there any questions from council or, uh, Mr. Mayor on, uh, any of this?
Owen, this is, you're putting two baskets up. This could be like a two-basket course.
Oh, there are currently, um, there are currently, um, five, there are currently five baskets already up at the, at the course. Um, there are currently six baskets already up at the course. And, um, just, and some baskets are, um, they, they count as one, like the, the basket that I planned, or one of the baskets I planned to replace. It holds one and, uh, one and six. So it would, it would, uh, it would, it would, um, we, we replace the missing ones to, to kind of re, um, remake it a nine-hole course, because originally it was a nine-hole course, but now it isn't with the baskets missing.
I understand. Wonderful. And would you plan on starting the project?
Oh, well, I have, uh, I've gotten the approval from, uh, our, our district from like the Boy Scout side. And, uh, obviously I've gotten Joel's approval. But I guess the, the project kind of, uh, what I, I had to submit, uh, uh, I had to submit a proposal to the, um, the bureaucracy at the Boy Scout, uh, BSA. And, um, I got that approved a couple of weeks ago. And so that kind of made the project. Uh, so the project, I guess, like started then, but the, like, the starting, meaning like fundraising and putting down the holes, that would start, um, as soon as I fill out like another form. And hopefully, uh, tentatively, I was hoping to start like the groundbreaking of like the new holes in, uh, on, 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 over MAA.
Do you agree?
Yep.
Owen, I can ask a question. Have you considered approaching some of the local groups in town such as Lions, which are your sponsor as, as?
Yeah. Yeah, I, um, uh, my dad's been helping me out with this, uh, Dave, and he's, uh, he used to be the school of work, uh, teacher at, uh, School of Work Coordinator at LSH. So he's got some connections to local businesses. I'm planning to go to the Rotary. They sent me to a leadership camp over in Southern, that was pretty cool. And there's, um, yeah, I, 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 um, yeah, I did plan to go on a local business initiative as well.
I can give you a name if you so desire to reach out to her, connect with that woman there waving her hand, connect with her.
Oh, yeah.
And she will help you with the document that needs to be completed for the Lions, which is.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Owen, thank, anybody else? Owen, thank you. I wanna wish you well with your Eagle Scout.
Yeah, I, I.
And the city, the city will do whatever we can do to help you along on this. And we want to see you succeed.
Yeah.
We want to see you succeed. I, I know you will.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know that you're an Eagle, uh, an Eagle Scout as well, or I guess former Eagle Scout.
Got another one on there.
Oh, wow. Very cool. Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
No, I, I just was gonna say, um, thanks, thanks to you for your support and I'll be, uh, hopefully you'll see me back here as when it's, uh, when it's completed with some, uh, before and after, before and after pictures.
Thank you. Thank you. You gave a wonderful presentation.
Thank you, council. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, that takes us to a public comment. Um, that moves on to the City Minister of Direct. Mr. Robin, you've been pretty quiet tonight.
Saving it up, Mr. Mayor. Buckle up. This may be my monthly reminder to everyone who hasn't already signed up, if you're not, please do so. Uh, we do see more and more people signing up for it, and it's critically important that you wanna be able to track your water and electric usage. It's the easiest, quickest way to do it. Um, it's super easy. There's no cost to it. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, anyone here in the room, talk to, uh, my friend Brian, because he's staring at me right now. If I start to grab, talk to Lindsay, talk to Foster, call Sally upstairs, buy, I'll get you set up. Since last meeting, staff have meant to discuss the ten-year street utility plan, uh, revamp, which is, I just reminder, council approved ten-year street utility capital improvement plan, which is a large-scale ten-year plan for, uh, our ten-year plan for large-scale street utility improvement projects back in twenty-twenty-three. And we are still hoping to bring forward a revised plan, or at least an updated plan with new numbers later this fall. Planning Commission met back on September eleventh for a slightly less rousing version of the Planning Commission in August. Uh, we had an EDA meeting tonight, discussed a number of projects that, uh, Jack has been working on with the EDA for local businesses, with schools, district, and some others. January first, twenty twenty-six, Minnesota Pay Family Leave Law, we're going to affect, the practice we're going to affect. Uh, there will be a policy discussion that at some point will be brought into the Personal Budget Committee, at least, uh, preliminarily, and hopefully to the City Council, in terms of what policy the city wants to adopt when it comes to managing or handling this sort of Gay Family Leave Act. Uh, a number of city leaders will be attending a mass fatalities planning in response to rural communities training session. That's next Monday and Tuesday. Uh, it's a theme in class, uh, and we're gonna host it here, uh, in council chambers. Uh, and it's kind of covers everything soup to nuts in terms of mask activity, etc., in rural, in rural communities. Uh, reminder to everyone, the future of the city forum, uh, which is put on by the city's planning commission. It's a planning, community building exercise, uh, that's kind of the culmination of, of a future city survey will take place on Tuesday, October twenty-first, at the Middle School High School from six PM to nine PM. Historically, it's been on the Saturday morning. We're trying it on a weeknight. We know that that's not gonna work for everybody, but we have to try something else to try to drum up some additional foot traffic. And here, we get a pretty good crowd every other Saturday, but we also hear feedback that dirt, a week evening is, is better. Although it's not for some people, but we're gonna, we're gonna try it this year. I wanna thank everyone, um, all city staff and members of the community, and members of council who participated in the bench dedication for Travis Mucko and, uh, Lady Chief Bruce Kelly, in honor of Officer Carl Hugman. Uh, last week, it was a beautiful ceremony and, um, up for the bees. It was a really, really nice morning for the community to come together to remember a few great guys. Uh, speaking of LSPD, I don't even think we've put this out on social media yet, but, um, that's listed on your calendars. Friday, October tenth, six thirty PM at the Fire Hall, uh, will be Officer Hugman's clown fire night. Um, so Officer Hugman has been planning, um, a, um, an event, uh, around fire safety with the public. Um, and so some officers and chief steer have taken that plan and, uh, bringing it to completion. And they hope to have it Friday, October tenth, we'll put it on social media, um, as soon as we get the date confirmed. But again, plan to be at the Fire Hall. I believe some Boy Scouts are gonna be involved, potentially. I hope this isn't the first time you're hearing this.
It is.
Okay, great. Um, and the fire department's gonna be there. Um, they may not know that yet either, but, um, fire team for demonstrations, smores, uh, it's just a community event that, again, Officer Hugman had been planning, uh, when he passed unexpectedly. So look for more information on that, uh, but pencil it in Friday, October tenth, six thirty PM at the Fire Hall. And two more things. One, uh, ten fifty AM this Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at Legion Park. There'll be a dedication planting of a tree in memory of the late, great Marion Peck. Um, a group of, uh, friends and acquaintances of Marion, um, raised some funds to purchase a tree that would be planted at Legion Park along South Park Lane. The Police Works Department will be, um, holding a very brief planting ceremony, ten fifteen, Wednesday morning. Everyone's invited. Uh, next meeting is Monday, October thirteenth. Yes, it is Indigenous People's Day, but no, it is not a formal holiday. So the City Council will meet on Monday, October thirteenth. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Robin. Anybody have any questions regarding his update? If not, I would like to take us into the regular agenda for tonight. And the first item on tonight's agenda is the residential refuse or recycling hauling services agreement. And then, A, Mr. Robin, you wanna review this?
I'm gonna thank Mr. Mayor. So it's some background information here. So the city of Lister, uh, within the community, give a little over thirteen hundred refuse and recycling customers, uh, residential. Um, city code dictates that no residential hauling shall be, of refuse and recycling shall be done without a permit from the city. The way the city has historically handled this is the city has granted one residential permit to one company that comes in and does all of the residential hauling for the city. Commercial industrial customers and multi-family, um, can, um, complexes can have their own. So that's why you'll see, you know, LJP trucks or Republic trucks in town because they're hauling for, for commercial industrial properties. Uh, but all, um, residential properties in town are covered under the, the city's permit, which it currently grants to waste management. Uh, the agreement that we currently have with waste management, um, started in twenty fourteen, really. And there was, I believe, an agreement prior to that. But twenty fourteen, it was a seven-year agreement that the city entered into with waste management. In twenty twenty-one, the City Council agreed to a new agreement with waste management for residential refuse and recycling hauling. And that twenty twenty-one agreement was a five-year agreement. So it will terminate naturally, um, on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Earlier this year, the City Council directed staff, uh, we had a conversation here about whether to enter into direct negotiations with waste management, a new long-term agreement, or issue a request for proposal to see what else is out there in the market. And the City Council voted to issue an RFE. Uh, so staff, um, directed a request for proposal, shared that with Personal Budget Committee, and that was launched this summer. We did receive three proposals, one from LJP, one from Waste Management, and one from West Central Sanitation. This is all in the council pack here, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on this. Everyone can, can read it at their leisure. But we have a comparison here for level of service, um, and just to be clear, LJP Waste Management, West Central, they don't all offer a thirty-two to sixty-four to ninety-six. Some of them are thirty-two, sixty-five, and a ninety-five. But it's directionally, directionally correct, directionally similar, um, in what their offerings are. In the grand left-hand side is what the city currently pays per unit, uh, per month for each customer. So what happens is Waste Management sends the city one bill, and the city's unresponsible for all the customers. That's the way the city was. So what happens is waste management sends the city one bill and the city is unresponsible for all the customers. That's the way the city of Lassor has handled this for a long, long time. Different haulers handle it differently. Some will do direct bill. Uh, we do centralized billing here out of the city. It goes on the um, utility bill. In the three major columns in the, the middle here for L G P waste management, West Central is a cost comparison that's directly out of their proposals. Um, and then at the bottom, I have a total estimated monthly cost to the city under each of those proposals. And then, you know, talent underneath there is an approximate uh, comparison to what we're currently paying. Again, this is not what customers are paying, this is what the city is paying for refuse recycling services um, for all of our customers. Uh, and then the far right hand side is the one year waste management extension. So the way the um, current agreement with waste management was written, there is a one year automatic renewal of the contract uh, that we go through twenty twenty six. And if the city council decides to do nothing in terms of action tonight, um, unless we respond with a intent to terminate by the end of September, the one year renewal automatically goes into effect. So important thing here is the city council has several options in front of it. Uh, in terms of what the council wants to do in twenty twenty six going forward, but the contract of waste management already provides for a one year extension. Extension under the current terms and conditions of the agreement. And uh, what you can see here is that it is uh, generally the most cost effective option uh, to take the one year extension from waste management as presented here. Yeah, the city council provides waste management with a ninety day notice if it seeks to terminate without a one year extension. Um, again, a couple of different options for the city council. One would be accepting the one year contract extension with waste management. And this may be um, depending on how council wants to handle this, could be accompanied by a direction to staff to pursue proposals in twenty twenty six. So go back out to the market early twenty twenty six and say, hey, we got waste management for another year. Do you want to test the market again? We'll do another RFP and see what companies want to um, respond with in twenty twenty six. Or there could be directions to um, negotiate directly with waste management for a contract to begin that in twenty twenty seven. Another option would be to notify waste management of intent to terminate the contract at the end of twenty twenty five, and then request your staff with then be that the additional action by city council to direct us to pursue a contract with L G P or West Central Sanitation. Because declaring our intent to terminate would effectively mean that we are likely going in the direction of another provider starting January first. While we have that proposal here, it is just their proposal. There would be some nuances that we would seek to work out in terms of contract negotiation, um, terms of service levels, term, things like that. Any take, any questions? But um, would ask for council's general direction on next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Any questions, councilman?
So, one of the options has to be to just pursue how long of a contract with waste manage continuing to contract with them. How many years do they do contracts?
So waste management um, pause, excuse me. Uh, they, waste management did not specifically propose any term in their proposal. Um, West Central and L G P did um, and ultimately, it's up to council to decide how long the term you would like um, from a price consistency standpoint, capability standpoint, a longer term can be beneficial um, as long as the council feels comfortable with the teeth that has in the agreement to get out of the agreement if there are um, reasons to terminate.
Thank you. Um, considering that we've had waste management for a long time, a service that everybody's quite familiar with. Uh, and they are the most um, inexpensive one that we saw up there. Um, my, my recommendation to everybody is that we take advantage of the one year contract extension. We can wait things as we move along here in the next year.
Uh, can I modify that a little bit with that? In twenty twenty six, we can again go out with RFPs to the various businesses and include clarification on how long the contract would be. I agree with your motion with the addition of RFPs to be done in twenty twenty six with review of length of contract.
Thank you. What's directly a motion, but I was thinking, I'm, but I hear what you're saying. So, so if we're looking for, go ahead, Mr. Roby. I'm just gonna ask, is just playing with that, is that a motion to accept the one year contract extension and then to issue an RFP in early twenty twenty six? Thank you. Appreciate that. I appreciate the clarity. So we have a motion to uh, accept the one year contract with uh, expiration of the longer contract next year. Um, or with any other companies, RFPs with other companies. We've got a motion for that. We got anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it. Any other comments? Concerns? Questions? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The eyes go. I'm sorry, I didn't look.
Well, just a clarification that you're going to accept the one year contract extension with waste management and go forward with RFPs in early twenty twenty six to include clarification on the length of contract future.
Thank you. And that was, yes, thank you. And that was a motion made by you and a second by council member Slater. Just to be clear, we all just voted on that. And we, yeah, it's still ready.
And I'll just add really quickly, thank you, Mayor, if I may, uh, that as part of the RFPs, knowing that next year, twenty twenty six, we won't have an automatic one year extension. We'll be looking at a brand new contract with waste management somewhere else starting twenty twenty seven. One thing that we would recommend is that city council um, hold some kind of work session uh, that way in twenty twenty six where we bring in the different vendors who have responded and conduct interviews and uh, reach out to some of their references as well. I think the interview, that's the process is to hear from them. Um, their customer service is like, is, is a big certainly a big decision, especially the way you've been with one holler for as long as the city has and can be significant change. So.
I'm gonna, I would also like to see it happen sooner than, you know, September. We have a bit more time to look at their proposals. I think that's possible.
Understood.
Thank you. Moving on. Two, I own uh, A P resolution on twenty twenty five, deck zero four seven. That would be the box hanger grant agreement. Mr. Roby, you want to review this one? I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council may recall, from May twenty twenty five, the city council awarded a contract for the construction of fixed equipment, fixed foot box hanger at Los Surby Municipal Airport. Uh, the award of contract to Ram uh, Ram Building was contingent upon the city receiving F A A grant covering uh, ninety five percent of the allowable costs in the project. We have now received that grant award from the F A A covering ninety five percent of the cost. It will also cover in addition to a half percent of the half of the remaining amount with the city um, city share estimated two and a half percent of the total project cost. So we have a contract award that's already been provided, the F A A grant, which is the terms of the city expected to see uh, to reimburse for grants, um, construction would begin uh, yet this fall. And the resolution acknowledges the award and approves the grant agreement execution as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Any other questions on this?
I have a question. So what's the bottom line cost to the city?
The.
The grants.
Hold up here really quick. I can go my homework, but I hate to do that. Let's talk about this for.
That was like twelve thousand.
Yeah.
I know what's taken.
Here we go. Fondue's actually a ten dollars. I was just trying to remember. So the amount that's estimated at this time for local shares, twelve thousand five hundred twenty five dollars and forty seven cents.
Or what, what we share or that's the same share.
Estimated right now of a little over five hundred thousand dollars for total construction cost.
Thank you for your question, council member Nelson. Anybody else? Otherwise, uh, I will accept the motion to um, accept resolution R twenty five, deck zero four seven as presented. So move, I could council member Huntington. Member Nelson, is that a, is that a, you? Uh, any other discussion and comments, questions? If not, all those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Moving on to reports and some appreciation, uh, council members, this is your community, sure what's going on in your commissions, what's going on in our community. Uh, and as always, we start with council member Huntington. Well, usually I have nothing, but today I have, well, I had three, but Joe took one of them, so I'm gonna cut one off. Um, M R V T meeting we had last week, uh, we passed our audits. They did find findings of the audits, uh, mainly was a uh, error clarifiers and do have to payments are required. The bridge payment was in forty five days. We were a little more than forty five days on a few of our invoices. Uh, we're correcting that issue as we uh, be done by the end of the year, hopefully we all corrected. Uh, ridership is up in Lassor. Thank you, everybody in Lassor for taking M R V T. Uh, and also special thanks to all the drivers, dispatchers, and Sherry and Sandy and all the people who they're involved in the operations of M R V T. It's been very successful. Very do appreciate it. I had a comment regarding the community showing up for the uh, bench dedication, but Joe took that away from me. Uh, so I'm gonna go, I'm just gonna jump into uh, one that close to my heart is public safety. Um, I've been uh, walking uh, on Third Street before uh, school starts after seven thirty just to uh, monitor the kids going to school. And I have noticed a unfortunate pandemic for uh, uh, people going through pedestrian walks while kids are trying to cross the street. Uh, this has now become a more of a daily basis I've been watching. Uh, so I'm asking that uh, public be aware. You see the kids, there's pedestrian walks. I thought the Joe regarding uh, maybe I'm flashing lights more on certain streets. But be aware of it. And this is uh, being more of a problem, it seems like. Also, the street level is twenty five miles per hour between seven thirty and eight thirty. Uh, I cannot, I don't got any uh, way to track how fast people are going, but based on what I see, uh, that's still above and beyond twenty five mile per hour. Um, uh, that's all I have to say about that. And just be careful. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Huntington. Um, your comments. Moving on, council member Nelson.
I was also at the M R, the bus meeting. I was gonna do the same thing. Cause he didn't, so.
Thank you, council member Sullivan, or Nelson. Moving on to council member Schley.
On uh, one, I attended the highway one sixty nine Zoom meeting, planning commission meeting that evening on the twelfth. Both, both of us from region nine went to Germany, met with the McKnight Foundation who funded our trip. We gave them a recap of what we did while we were all in there. They wanted to talk about future funding opportunities that they might extend to region nine. E D A meeting earlier tonight, and I just wanted to note that there's uh, these are county officials meeting this Wednesday and Monday. That's all I have.
Thank you, council member Slater, council member Smith.
I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Council member Sullivan. Okay, council member Williams.
I guess I want to say thank you to the city staff for the citywide cleanup. I hear it went well and we moved two trucks out of my house, so I'm happy. Um, also, I commend the Lions for their breakfast, the flying breakfast that they had and all the planes that landed, kind of showcased that airport out there. It was quite a a great day and they served over for five hundred breakfasts. So kudos to them for bringing all that to Lassor. And to your comments, I appreciate the city staff for painting the P X or the pedestrian walkways. It became brighter, but um, it is a tough thing. It's a busy time of day. It's tough. But good comment. Appreciate you bringing that up, Mark.
Nothing else.
Hugh, council member Williams. Uh, I have nothing other than I wish uh, uh, the weather to be well on Wednesday and the fifteenth for the Mary Pick pre-dedication over at the park. I think my work's gonna get in the way of that. I won't be able to send that, but I hope there's a good compliment. Cause you're in quite a community member and, and also good reference. That I have nothing else. I would entertain motion to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?